Name brands, I mean he's got all the top of the line. I guess that stuff's just a lot more money than they used to make. Thomasville and all that stuff.
It's the labor, especially Thomasville, yeah. Because they still make that, I think.
Yeah.
North Carolina.
Yeah.
That means it's American labor.
American made, American labor.
I mean, they, they harvest it like twenty, thirty times outside of the.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thirty, oh, yeah. Phil's gonna go home, he needs four.
Oh, okay.
So I just gotta put it on.
Oh.
But they used to, they need to run it. He was gonna pull it, so I just gotta be able to pull it. Put it on next week when Alan's back and then we can build on it. Well, it's nice having you down with us. Well, we're getting close. I think we're ready. I think we're ready, Bill.
Mr. Spatter, good.
I signed off on the DA yesterday, so Mr. Lee mentioned being with the starting.
Right.
Oh, good. Good.
What are we gonna do now? We're, we're not gonna have a.
Oh, no. What's this? It's not, it's not Movember.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see what options I have from myself.
So what are we gonna meet in November? Okay. Well, you can. Then I got a good review and then I got a peek at it.
Ergonomic chair.
The only reason I don't fit me, but it's. Okay. Showing off my time.
Really looks nice.
Yeah.
It's got gray in there.
Okay, good. This whole thing is fresh.
Makes it a lot faster.
You wear your shirt on.
I know, I know.
Really?
He's got, he's got meat. He's got wine.
He is covered.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and she's, because she, she's in the middle of her term.
Hey, I think we're ready. Nine o'clock. Hornstein. Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome to the, uh, uh, August ninth, Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand and join me in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please be seated. Okay. Start off with Board of Supervisors matters. Uh, uh, I don't know whether to say Supervisor Vanderpool or Grizzly Adams. Supervisor Vanderpool.
Uh, well, you know, I, I am trying a new look. I think I was just trying to keep my wife interested. She's hitting that big twenty-eight this year and apparently, uh, a clean-shaven face wasn't doing it for her anymore. So, uh, at her request, I'm going with a little bit of facial hair. And it also gives me options just to see what our possibilities come Movember, so. Um, anyways, uh, I, uh, have several meetings this week as usual. Um, but, uh, one, uh, in particular that I think's very interesting is gonna be a, a meeting with, uh, the Cuieta Delta Water Conservation District as well as, um, several board members from the People's Ditch Company. Um, because of, uh, their water situation being very unique, um, and that they're not groundwater users at all. Um, they only exist because of surface water rights that they have. Um, they are typically underrepresented on, in the conversations for groundwater sustainability, um, because that deals with groundwater pumping and groundwater levels. Well, their surface water, uh, is providing relief from farmers using groundwater instead. So, um, they're looking for a, a way to increase their representation on the, um, groundwater sustainability agencies in, I believe it's the mid Cuieta, um, or upper Cuieta. There's several of them, but, uh, I'm, I'm very glad to be a part of that conversation. I hope that we can work something out to where all parties are happy. Um, also, this Saturday, uh, August thirteenth at seven PM at the residence of, uh, Dr. Kumar in Tulare, uh, will be the summer jubilee. Uh, thank you to, uh, all of the restaurants who are participating and for all of the, uh, members of the community that will be in attendance to support the hospital foundation in Tulare. Uh, it's always a great event, well-attended, and as usual, it seems to fall on a day that's over a hundred degrees. Um, and then on Monday, I will be having a meeting with myself and Supervisor Ennis. We'll be meeting with, uh, Tom, I can't remember his last name, from, uh, Alliant. Um, he is our new, uh, Health Benefits Plan Consultant. Um, and we're gonna be having a meeting specifically talking about, um, the, uh, health plans and the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. Um, and I know there have been many comments that have been made with the, uh, financial issues that have been had over the last year in the SJVIA, um, as to looking at alternatives and possibly getting out of the SJVIA. Um, but I, I think that there are some real options and opportunities for us, uh, to look at within the SJVIA, uh, to keep what's going, working, um, and also providing, uh, increased benefits to, uh, all of our employees who are, uh, plan members. So I look forward to that conversation and, uh, really digging in the details with a third party, um, regarding the SJVIA. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Cox.
A couple of things. Uh, tomorrow, we have our re- regular retirement board meeting, and there will be a ribbon-cutting for a new, uh, junior high school in Visalia, the one up on Acres and Rigan. If you've driven out that way, you can't miss it. The multi-story, uh, good-looking building. Um, Thursday, looking forward, we have a continuation of our space planning meeting where we will, um, be looking at some plans and making some final decisions on renovations that we're looking at doing on, on three of our buildings here. And then, uh, also, later that afternoon, I have the City Visalia Redevelopment Oversight Board meeting. Uh, I also have been packing. Uh, we are moving. We have a, a daughter in Idaho that we thought we'd like to get closer to, so we're moving two miles to the north from where we live right now. Uh, a few weeks ago, we had, uh, someone come into our board meeting and speak during public comment time. And this person said she was a, a, uh, community advocate and was here because of a, a resident in Ivanhoe that was not being, or that was in a house that was really hot. And we remember two weeks ago, it was much hotter than it is today. And so I did a little bit of an investigation. That person was actually a representative for a general contractor, trying to sell those people improvements to their home, and on the business card has the HERO stamp. So we've had the HERO and the PACE programs come here before, so I will, uh, I will call that a, a little bit of a scam. I was, uh, kinda put off when I found it out. And I actually asked the person during our meeting if, uh, they were familiar with the Proteus program. And her response in this meeting was, "They don't wanna wait, the waiting list is too long." So I got on the phone the next day to the person who runs that program and says, "There is no waiting period. They are one-hundred percent caught up." So, uh, as this board reconsider's PACE and HERO programs, we need to keep these type of contractors in, in mind. Then, two days after we had our meeting here, uh, there were, uh, there was a presentation given to the Realtors Board by a gentleman out of, uh, Monterey, who has closely been monitoring the PACE and HERO programs. And he came, uh, with some very good information that I passed along to you gentlemen about the mini scams that are being, uh, produced, uh, using those programs. And so I, I think we just need to be cautious as we move forward. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, last Friday, we had a press conference in Fresno concerning the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority. And I, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the individual now. He's a boxer and he hails from Avonale, and so he had dedicated some of his winnings to helping to pay for their cost of being a member to the, uh, authority. And so we wanted to use that opportunity to, um, have the press conference, and we actually had four, uh, different move, um, channels that were there, uh, filming it. So it was good, again, to keep it in front of the, the public. Uh, yesterday, I did the, uh, one day up and back to Sacramento on the, the, um, tree mortality task, state task force. Um, that, those meetings, I believe, are important to attend, but they're also pretty frustrating, um, because there's, anybody who's been to the woods at all, uh, in the last year, and if, and if you haven't been in the last six months, I encourage you to go back up and look because the entire, in some areas, there, the expectation is we may have only ten or fifteen percent of the trees remaining when this is all said and done. Uh, so obviously, things need to be done, and to put it in perspective, the Sequoia National Forest has, I believe, at the last count, six point two million dead trees. And so far, in the, between the Stanislaw Sierra and Sequoia National Forest, the National Forest has taken down a hundred and ten thousand trees, uh, and treated sixteen thousand acres. And again, on the Sequoia, there's a one point one million acre forest. So, when you look at the scope of the problem, and we're not allowed to remove trees off the national monument, um, even if they could be used here internally, that is, domestically, because there's an exportation on, ban on, uh, uh, logs out of the country, but even if we were to use them here locally or somehow within the country, uh, they're not being allowed to be removed. Now, on the Stanislaw, they are doing that. They are selling the trees and they're finding homes for some of those trees. Uh, so there's just, you know, so many glitches, so many, uh, constraints, uh, going forward, and yet, the trees continue to die, the danger continues to grow, uh, and, uh, you know, we just keep plugging away. And I'm happy that we're having a matter in our board, uh, agenda for today, and I'll, I'll reserve my, some other comments, uh, when we, when that comes up. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Uh, you know, it, it, it kinda, it kinda bothers me when I look at the Doyle Colony area in Porterville, where the state is willing to come in and engineer a system, put the pipes in the ground, and you can't get people to come down and sign up to get water. That's frustrating to me. But I hope they get the message, because that tank they got in their yard is not gonna be filled once those pipes go in the ground. And if they don't hook up the water, when it's there for them to hook up to, they will be red-tagged. I mean, we're not gonna play games anymore with people. Been out of water for four or five years, now this system comes along, state's paying for the whole thing, even to hook 'em up, and they will not come down and sign up. Now, that's frustrating to me. Very frustrating. I think there's maybe been two hundred homes sign up. Out of five hundred, I mean, that's what they're waiting on. But, uh, I don't know how we can put a little more pressure on them to get them to sign up. Uh, maybe it's the fact that they know they're gonna get a water bill. Well, they're gonna get a water bill because we all pay water bills. But it's very frustrating to me as a county supervisor and to see the state coming in and doing something that's unprecedented. They never do something like this. That's been the problem with our, uh, little unincorporated disadvantaged communities, is the fact we can't get the engineering work done to get the grant, to get the system in. They're doing the whole thing and paying for everything, even hooking the people up, pipes to the house. So I'm pretty frustrated with the, with the east side and the Doyle Colony area. And I hope the word gets out that I am very frustrated with it. Because this is an opportunity of a lifetime. Build that special well, we're getting that hooked up to the system, and if we have to, we'll probably go after more water if we need it, to get these people water, but just get some drinking water, good drinking water, they can drink, get some off-the-bottle water program. We're spending half a million dollars a month out there right now, and it's frustrating to me as a county supervisor to see people will not take the initiative to come down. They gotta go down to City Hall and sign up, because the bill's gonna be coming from the city of Porterville. So, I don't know. But it wasn't my turn on the radio this morning. Supervisor Cox filled in for Supervisor Sheeda, who's out of the area, but I would've jumped on my soapbox this morning on the radio and told him how this, you know, what I really think about this. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Also, we're, I still moving forward with our mental health facility in Porterville, and that's gonna be a big, big, uh, compliment to the community. We've been needing that ever since we closed the clinic years ago out on the east side, uh, about by the courthouse. So, that's something that I'm looking forward to, to seeing, uh, move forward. So, that's all I have this morning, and of course, this tree mortality deal, uh, you know, just getting hazardous trees is, is, is gonna be a big job. That's just the ones on the right-ofways on our roads, like Redwood Drive and some of these others, but, uh, it's, it's very frustrating when you drive up there and look, and nothing going on.
Well, I will, just real quickly on that point, uh, and I made this point yesterday at the meeting, uh, I, you know, I wanna say very positive things about Caltrans and about the utility companies, because they are the ones who are doing things. They're up there, if you're, if you have a, a home or a cabin and improvement that has electrical connection to it and it's in danger of being hit by a falling tree, uh, the utility companies will come and they will take the tree down and remove it for you at no cost to the property owners. Uh, Caltrans is actively taking down trees on state highways along two forty-five and, and I believe on one, on one eighty, uh, up in my district. And so, uh, but for the utility companies and, um, and Caltrans, there's not been a lot of activity. Now, of course, we'll start some activity on county roads here today, I hope, but, uh, that, that is, that is the only real positive thing to see, and then whatever trees the Forest Service has gotten down, of course, I mean, that's beneficial. But, uh, they're not removing the fuel, so, you know, you're just rearranging the fuel, so when a fire comes through, it's still there to burn, and that's, that's part of the frustration.
Thank you. Okay, that does our Supervisor Matters. Now, we will move on to, uh, item number two, presentation given by Jennifer Pendigraft, Visalia Rawhide Manager, regarding the Play Ball Program. Jennifer.
Morning, and thank you all for having me. This is my first time here. Right. So, uh, the Step Up Program was really influential in helping us with a brand-new community pro- initiative that we started this year, uh, that we called the Play Ball Program. Now, before I get into how it was implemented locally, I wanna talk about kinda where this program was coming from initially, which was last year during the season when Commissioner Manfred took office for Major League Baseball. His community initiative, he wanted to call Play Ball. And basically, it, the idea and premise behind it was to go into the thirty communities that Major League Baseball is hosted in and go into the parts of town that maybe baseball doesn't have as much exposure to, uh, where kids either aren't exposed to it because schools have stopped teaching how to play baseball, or maybe financially, the kids just didn't have the resources to be able to join a local league. So, uh, as you can see, the T-shirts kinda preaching how to play ball in many different ways, and Commissioner Manfred himself was going to all these thirty cities and helping to have these little clinics where, um, uh, kids were invited out to come play ball. Now, these clinics were just hosted one time per year in each city, and I'm thinking, "Hi, you have, uh, what is?" And I'll show you, there's a hundred and eighty minor league baseball teams throughout the country. He never asked us to get involved, and we are not big cities, we're in rural communities. So, um, I thought there was a missed opportunity there for this message to be spread even further throughout, uh, America, and it's America's greatest pastime. So, um, what we did was, I, I like to start templates, so what I did was start another template. And, um, we wanted to not only do just one clinic per, uh, year, because I don't, you know, just a one-and-done is not enough. If you really want people to play ball, you need to really teach them how. So what we wanted to do was, um, come up with a group of kids in our area who also were struggling from the same things, just not, uh, as much exposure to baseball, and, who were interested in playing, and bring them to the ballpark, one, to see a game and kind of kick off the program, and then host one clinic per month throughout the summer that they would come out to and that our players and coaches would help, uh, facilitate, and then, um, kinda close out the program. We're hoping to make this an annual thing and to continue with these kids as they grow up. So, what we did is we went around to all the after-school programs and, um, asked them, you know, "Do you have the kids that we're looking for, and how would you like to partner with us?" And long story short, we chose the Whitman Center because, um, they were just really excited about the program, and I got Juan with me here, and, um, they helped us get it off the ground, and they've been fantastic partners. So, um, the partners that we recruited before this program was kicked off was, uh, we went to the Diamondbacks and we explained the program to them, and they said, "That's awesome. We want you guys to be the template within our organization." So next year, the Diamondbacks are actually gonna pull this template and implement it with their six minor league teams that they have throughout the country. Um, the Step Up Program, like I mentioned, was a great part of this, and I'll show you how. And then we also roped in the Tulare County, um, Education, uh, Character Counts Program, and I'll also explain how they're involved. So kinda step one in this whole process was, we talked to Juan and asked him, "Well, in your part of the community, on the north side of Visalia, um, where is a baseball field that these kids could have access to on non, uh, out, non-Whitman Center hours?" And so he brought us to Serato Field, um, and it looked like the top picture when we first checked it out, and then we brought out our grounds crew and our front office staff, and we, uh, concluded with the bottom picture. So we got it cleaned up for the kids, and, um, that was quite a project, and it was a lot of fun.
Brought some clay, it looks like, too.
What's that?
Brought some clay.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, yeah, we rebuilt the mound and, yeah, just, yeah, got all the weeds out of there. Hopefully, it looks something similar to this today. Then we, um, we asked the Whitman Center to pull together, uh, fifty kids, and being one of the only female general managers in baseball, I wanted twenty-five girls and twenty-five boys. And so they were fantastic about doing that, and we brought these kids together and we took them to Dick's Sporting Goods and let them go shopping for their first gloves, and, uh, that was a pretty cool experience. Hopefully, the kids can share about that later. Um, we had our players helping them pick out which glove was, was perfect for them. Of course, that was the most expensive glove. Uh, here's just a group shot of shopping day. And then, uh, the next step was to bring them out to a Rawhide game, and they got to be recognized on the field and were announced with the players and got to stand out there for the National Anthem. As you can see, they all got their awesome Play Ball T-shirts with the Step Up Program logo on the back there. And they mingled with local celebrities during the game. And then we started our clinics, and this was our April clinic where we, um, each clinic, we focus on a different aspect of the game, so this one, we started out basic with just throwing and catching. And as you can see, uh, having fifty kids out there on the field is quite an undertaking, so not only do we have our players and coaches out there helping them, but we also recruited from local, um, local teams in the area, too. So, for example, we've had, uh, Redwood, Mount Whitney, El Diamante, and La Jolla Middle School baseball teams have all come out to help us as well, and then, uh, COS and Redwood softball teams have brought out their girls to help us also. And we have, uh, four, uh, ex-college softball players in our front office, so we all got out there, too. Uh, here's the hitting clinic where we're, we're all in the batting cages. Sliding and base rimming, that one we brought out, it was over a hundred degrees, so we brought out the slip and slide there at the end. I think our players had more fun than anybody, but it was a good time. And then, like I mentioned, we have the Character Counts Program that's also involved. So at the end of each clinic, we ha- we asked our, um, volunteer, uh, clinic facilitators to choose kids that they, uh, thought displayed that pillar of character that we were focusing on at that clinic, and they got awarded, uh, with little goodies and, uh, PIN. And that's the basic gist of it. I didn't wanna take up too much of your time, just to explain the overall aspect, and then I'll ask Juan to step forward and say whatever he wants to, and then you have some awesome kids who have been working hard all summer, and let's give them a chance to talk to. Thank you.
Well, good morning. Thank you for, uh, having us here today. We, uh, we were excited about this program. One of the things that we recognize and, and I hope people understand is that, you know, baseball's really being lost, especially here in the rural areas. When we were approached about doing the baseball program at the Whitman Center in the Lincoln Oval area, we jumped at the chance. And one of the things I heard is that, you know, maybe it'll expand. We have kids in London, another community center that could also participate. We'll have them join in, and in fact, we did, and I'll tell you that in a minute. We took, uh, about thirty-five kids out there, we recruited, and, uh, Highland Elementary, the principal, Principal Mata, she joined us on the buses. Visalia Unified provided buses, the Loop provided buses, the county. Step Up was involved, uh, Character Counts was involved. Right after we did the clinics, we started a, uh, little baseball league. We've been playing baseball with the Hernandez Center and with Boys and Girls Club. We've been doing that. School's gonna start, so we're gonna stop, but we've actually been introducing baseball to the little kids here in Visalia. We actually started with mushball because we wanted to include everybody in there. But, uh, well, these are some of the kids we woke up today. Guys, did you guys like the program? Yeah, I know you guys did. Very grateful of the county, the Step Up Program, uh, Rawhide Baseball, and Tulare County, TCOE on Character Counts. Thank you very much. I know you're real busy, and we don't wanna take up a whole lot of your time. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for coming and bringing the kids, 'cause.
Do you guys have any questions for us at all?
Questions, guys? Comments?
A quick, a quick comment. I went to the first clinic they did, and, you know, the, the young people, it ranged the whole gamut from didn't even know which hand to put the ball glove on, where to put your fingers, to some of these older girls who could probably have stepped out on a, uh, a Little League team and started pitching. Some of these older girls were just really awesome. I was very impressed with how well they threw, how well they, they caught. Uh, but this, as I understand, we're planning on going, you know, next year and maybe expanding the program. Look forward to that, look forward to bringing in, uh, you know, like Juan said, maybe some of the, uh, youth from these communities where they don't have an opportunity to, uh, play baseball at all. So, thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, I got a cou- couple of comments. First of all, I hope that, uh, you guys kept Phil on the sidelines in the clinic and didn't let him do any instructing or throwing the ball, because I think someone might've gotten hurt, and one of the kids could have.
Hey, I can still throw a ball.
But, uh, and anyways, um, I, I just, what a great program. I hope that, uh, we're able to, uh, expand the program to not only include, uh, youth from Visalia, uh, but also Tulare and, and maybe some of the, the South County as well, where they also do not have activities and are also, uh, losing exposure to baseball, because this is a great program to not only teach kids, uh, about baseball, but it's a great program because it gives youth something to do, uh, in areas where there isn't much to do, uh, and two, uh, during times when school is not in session, and that's typically the, uh, the main activity for them. So, um, I hope that all of you as youth enjoyed the experience, um, and got to have a, a good time seeing baseball be played, and, uh, hopefully, we'll be seeing some, uh, future Major League Baseball players and, uh, softball Olympians come out of this, uh, uh, group right here. So, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I was gonna say, it's, it's interesting that you made that comment about losing baseball, because I, I come from a community in Dainuba where it's huge. I mean, they just have a huge program, so the idea that you kinda pick and choose, like you said, if you go to London, you go to Sultana, you go to outlying areas, these smaller communities, there, there's a dearth of opportunities. And so, just as Jennifer pointed out, that when you move down the level to smaller cities, um, the need is perhaps greater in those communities, it's even more so in our disadvantaged communities, because oftentimes, they don't have the programs where the, some of the cities have their athletic programs and there's, and recreational programs. So, uh, what a great opportunity for folks, and thanks to, to Rawhide Baseball for taking the lead in this matter, so, very good.
Thank, thank you, Jennifer, Juan. Thanks, kids, for being here, and hey, besides that, it's just a lot of fun. You know, that's the whole deal.
Pickup jeans are a lot of fun, too.
Having a lot of fun, playing baseball and, and being happy, so. Thank you so much for being here this morning and telling us about your program.
Make sure they all watch Sandlot.
Thank you.
Next, uh, clinic is on the twenty-seventh. If any of you wanna come out and join us at noon, and then we'll have our final game on August twenty-eighth. If you guys wanna join us for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning. Thank you, kids. Good seeing you.
Mr. Chair, while she's leaving through all of this, Jennifer was very pregnant. And we have the fruit of the labor there on the floor. And we have the fruit of the labor there on the floor. Good baseball name.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You're being good, too. Yeah, yeah.
Sleep does.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number three, public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on issues not on the agenda but pertinent to the Board of Supervisors may do so at this time. Anybody?
Really quick, Chairman. Board members, Mr. Spada, Mr. Sims. Just want to take this opportunity to introduce to you our new Assistant Director for Fiscal Services, Sherman Dix. He's, we're excited to have him be a part of our team. He comes to us with a great deal of knowledge and experience in accounting and fiscal management, so we're very excited to have him part of our team. Just want to introduce him to your board.
Good. Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm excited about the opportunity and serving Tulare County and this board, and happy to be here.
Thank you.
You got the blue shirt memo, too.
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay, anybody else wishing to approach the board? Dr. Haas?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, CAO and County Council. Thank you. My name is Karen Hart. I'm the Public Health Officer for Tulare County. And I came today just to give you a brief report about Zika virus, to update you. There has been no local transmission in California for Zika virus. There have been one hundred and thirty-four cases reported in California as of the end of last week, including two cases in Tulare County. However, these cases are all related to travel, related to travel to the areas at high risk, which are in South, the countries in South America, Central America, and the Caribbean. The primary mode of transmission of Zika virus is through the bite of the Adyseegipti mosquito, and also, it can be transmitted sexually. The Adyseegipti mosquito is not native to California, but has been found in some counties in California in recent years, including Tulare County. However, this year, as of, we've recently been informed by Delta Vector that their surveillance has not yet, has not identified any of these mosquitoes this year, so that's good news. Zika virus infections can be mild or asymptomatic or cause a febrile illness for about a week, but our major concern is for pregnant women. It can cause major problems for the developing fetus if a pregnant woman becomes infected. So, our major prevention message is to ask people who are pregnant, women who are pregnant or considering becoming pregnant, not to travel to areas at high risk. And also, to ask men who have partners who are pregnant or may become pregnant not to travel to areas at high risk. If they must travel to these areas, then we ask that they be very cautious about preventing mosquito bites. And we also ask that any men who have traveled to these areas, if they have a partner who's pregnant, that they avoid sexual activity or use condoms throughout the whole pregnancy to avoid having the, a pregnant woman infected with Zika virus. So, the means to prevent the mosquito bites in the areas at high risk are the same as what we always recommend here to prevent mosquito bites. The, what we've recommended for many years to prevent mosquito bites, that, from the Kulix mosquito that prevent, causes West Nile virus. So, we ask that people inspect their yards, their property, make sure there's no standing water. The problem with Adyseegipti is that they take just a very little bit of water to breed. So, it's, takes a lot of diligence to make sure that we prevent their breeding sources, to use good, have good screens, and to stay in air conditioning when possible, and when outdoors, to use light clothing to keep covered, to prevent mosquito bites, and to always use an EPA-approved insect repellent on your skin and on your clothing if you can. So, these measures will help prevent both Zika virus infections, particularly when you're traveling, if you must travel, and also prevent West Nile virus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Good information. Thank you, Dr. Hart. I appreciate you sharing that.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to approach the board during public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and take up our consent calendar. Item eight and item twenty-four are pulled off for, pull the agenda for rescheduling. Any other items that the board or anybody would like to have pulled?
Sure, I have a really quick question on item number fifteen.
Okay.
John Hess, WCAO.
This is the back half of the building and does not affect the lease on the front half where the offices are at.
Let me get Robert Newby in the audience here to confirm.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Cox. That is the portion that Health Human Services pieces and use for storage. They're using a little bit of the storage space for a break slash conference room.
Okay, thank you. No other comments, Mr. Chairman? I move approval to balance the consent calendar. Second. Second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes is unanimous with Supervisor Sheeda not being present. Okay, we'll take up our timed item, public hearing. Request from Resource Management Agency, accept the categorical exemption as a appropriate environmental determination consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. Eight.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members, Mr. CAO, County Council, Mike Washum, Economic Development and Planning Assistant Director of RMA. Today, for your consideration, is a change of zone. The, just to summarize, this is a request to change zoning designation on approximately a five-acre parcel from AE40 to rural residential, one acre minimum. In December of last year, your board approved PZI 15001 to allow the project to proceed as a zone change. The Planning Commission, during its June 8th meeting, recommend that your board approve the category exemption and the change of zone by Resolution 9201. In addition, at that meeting, the Planning Commission, for efficiency's sake, tentatively approved parcel map PPM 16008 to divide the property into four parcels, approximately one and a quarter acre each, each one containing one residence. That was tentatively approved by the Planning Commission contingent upon the approval of the zone change under consideration today. Sites located approximately eight hundred feet north of State Route 198, about a mile north and west of City of Exeter. Whenever we consider changing zones in the valley agriculture area, RVLP checklist is conducted. This score after analysis was seven points. Typically, a score seven points, the project would be allowed to be rezoned under the RVLP and being consistent with the general plan. Here's a vicinity map on the left that shows the location there, just north, it's kind of hard to see, but just north of 198 between Farmersville and Exeter. And on the right is the proposed zoning map change, the official zone change. Here's an aerial, the parcels outlined by white. You can see that there's four houses on the site already. You can also see that the surrounding area is all zoned AE40, but there's a number, I believe it's twenty-two parcels that are undersized, but mostly ranging around one acre in size. So, it's consistent with the surrounding area. A category exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and its state guidelines for implementation, specifically a Class III exemption, was determined by the Planning Commission to be appropriate, and that is because this is compatible, because the project is fully developed and does not propose any future development at all on the site. And with that, the request is that your board hold a public hearing and then approve the requested actions as detailed in your agenda item resolution. With that, that concludes staff's report.
Mike, I think the reason for this is so that each residence has its own lot. Is that the idea?
Correct. The, they're all family members. They'd like to have their own individual lots, be able to pay their own property taxes for each parcel, and that's the purpose of why they brought this forward.
Questions?
Chair, I have no question, but my concern is, these are houses that were built twenty to twenty-five years ago. So, been there for a very long time, and we're making these folks jump through these hoops to rezone this. Something that I've advocated for quite some time is that the county take up a program whereby we look at instances just like this, where they may be zoned AE40, 20, 10, whatever it is, and they have one, they're split up into one to two acre pieces. So, it's unfortunate that we, for me, that we made these folks go through this long process when there could be a program in place initiated by the county that would help grandfather some of these types of properties in. You know, it's, no one here would be surprised at the number of businesses and one acre, you know, parcels that homes have been on for the last twenty, thirty, forty years and they're miszoned. So, I would like to see this board take up a program whereby we initiate a blanket program where if someone is in a situation like this, where they're, they've got a group of homes or even family homes on a parcel that is missed or that's zoned incorrectly, we ought to be able to help them and help them more expeditiously than making them go through this whole process. Just to comment, and I know I've talked with staff about this, it's not an easy thing to do because we have thousands of these properties like this.
Although, I might respond to that. It is somewhat unique here. We have a lot of property which is, quote, miszoned, but it doesn't mean that they don't already own their parcels. So, if the parcel's owned by somebody, even though it's zoned AE40 or AE20 and they're sitting on one acre, but they own the parcel, it's fully sellable, it's, they can fix it, they can build a house on it. This is somewhat unique. There are a lot fewer parcels like this where you have one individually-owned parcel that people have chosen to build residences on, multiple residences, and now, they're seeking to divide it. That would be a much smaller number. And in, to kind of address your issue, if it's something which predated our zoning requirements, I fully agree with that. If somebody went into this knowing how it was zoned, they chose to build those houses, then that was, that was a choice they made. And whether it was a smart, smart choice or not, beside the point, I think it's why you often times will see a second residence on a piece of property will be a mobile home because that concept that the mobile home, if they choose to, could be moved off and taken someplace else. But, you know, I live on four acres. If I chose to have, you know, another, you know, went through the process and had two or three residences built on that four acres, you know, that's, that's an issue. But I know it going in, and so, that's, it would, it's an interesting situation you posit, but it is somewhat unique to this kind of circumstance where people choose to build multiple residences on a single parcel of property.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time. Seeing none? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'll second.
Moved by, was it Supervisor Vanderpool? Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. It's four unanimous with Supervisor Sheeda not being here. Okay, let's move on to our items not timed. Item number twenty-six, request from the District Attorney to accept grant funding in the amount of $400,000 from the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services for new elder abuse program.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Spada. My name is Daniel Underwood. I'm the Chief Deputy District Attorney with the DA's office. This agenda item is something that the board contemplated back in February. There was an agenda item back in February that allowed us to apply for this grant funding through the Governor's Office of Emergency Service. It was a competitive process. We've been awarded a grant up to $400,000. That would require a $100,000 match from our office. It may not rise to that level, but that is the maximum we can spend. The focus of this grant is really to get two victim witness workers who will spend a lot of their time doing outreach to the various communities of Tulare County in the hopes of raising awareness and preventing further elder abuse in Tulare County. So, I appeared this morning to address any questions the board may have, and I'd be happy to do so.
I think it's a good program, I'll tell you, because there's people out there that we don't even hear about sometimes that are affected by this, so it's, to me, it's a very good program.
You did a much better job on K-Tip, your presentation.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make one point. I, and I'm sure that your office is already doing it with all of your different programs, but I think that we all, we have to make sure that this, these outreach workers are hopefully bilingual in, with, have bilingual capabilities so that we are able to reach everyone in this county, then, so that no elders are left potentially exposed.
Yes, it's, I would add, it's an area that goes under-reported a lot, a lot of times. People are victimized, they're embarrassed to come forward. We've had a dedicated prosecutor in elder abuse that our department felt was worth having for years now. And the goal here is really to raise awareness through the, through the, the intent is to have bilingual victim workers, of course, and we anticipate they're going to be out in the communities.
That's great.
With most of their time.
That's great. Mr. Chair, if there's no public comments about this item, very enthusiastically move for approval.
Second by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Wordley. Cast your votes. It's unanimous with Supervisor Sheeda being absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just note for Supervisor Vanderpool, I believe when Movember starts, you have to start in a clean shave.
Yeah, you gotta shave it off, yeah.
This is just giving me options here, Dan. Come on.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Okay, we'll move to item number twenty-seven, approved submission of highway safety improvement program and funding application. Ben?
Good morning, Chairman, Board members, Mr. Spada, Mr. Sims. Ben Arise, interim director of the Resource Management Agency. The item before you today is a request to approve a funding application for highway safety improvement program funding for safety-related projects on Tulare County roads. Give a brief overview of the HSIP program. Go through the process that we go through to select the projects. Describe the two projects that we're proposing, one on Avenue 424 and one on Drive 134 or Spacer Drive. I'll also summarize our ongoing, excuse me, our ongoing and completed projects that have been funded through the HSIP program previously. Summarize our request, go through acknowledgements, and of course, be able to answer any questions you may have. So, the HSIP program is part of the Moving Ahead for Progress in the Twenty-First Century Legislation, or otherwise known as MAP 21. It's administered by the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans. The selection process for these projects is competitive-based. It's, it's based on performance, and the projects that are awarded must be supported by data or an analysis, in this case, you know, traffic accidents and collisions. The projects, of course, will be managed by the RMA through design and construction. The program does require a 10% local match, which we have used our road funds for, for the match. Some specifics of the project, the applications are due by the end of this week. The maximum funding limit per agency is $10 million. That is also the maximum funding amount for a single project. The projects can be as small as $100,000. There is approximately $150 million statewide for this program. There's eligibility criteria for the projects. As long as each project meets those eligibility criterias, criteria, the selection process is based solely on a benefit-cost analysis, which I'll go over how we perform that analysis. So, the selection process, how do we choose the projects? Here's a map of Tulare County and all the various accidents and collisions throughout the county. So, we take into account the accident history over the last five years based on our in-house database, as well as databases that are available online through Switters. We then try to focus in on either intersections or roadway segments that have shown an above-average history of traffic collisions or accidents. This, for example, is the Spacer Drive or Avenue 130, or diagonal 134. And it, you can see... Um, and it, and you can see here that there's, um, all of the pin drops indicate or signify potential accident or traffic collision. So, with that, um, the program does offer guidance on how to perform the benefit-cost analysis. Um, they assign, uh, a potential benefit to each accident or collision based on the severity or the type of accident. Uh, and basically what you do is you take, um, these dollar values and if you go, for example, on this, uh, roadway, you assign a dollar value to each accident based on the type of accident that it is. So, um, for example, if there's ten accidents here and they're each, uh, have a potential benefit of a hundred thousand dollars, there could be a potential benefit of a one million dollars on this roadway segment, depending on how many collisions you can reduce. The program also offers guidance on, you know, how can you reduce, um, the collisions and accidents? That's based on studies performed by FHSWA and statistics that they have in-house, and they recommend these potential countermeasures. So, it depends on the type of accident, of course, also your site conditions, um, and we have guidance and, and of course, engineering judgment as to which, which one of these countermeasures would be applicable, um, to the project. So then, based on those countermeasures, uh, we develop our project, we lay it out, we do some preliminary engineering and come up with a cost estimate, uh, for the improvements based on our historic data and for similar type of projects. So, very simply put, the benefit-cost ratio is just your benefit divided by the project cost. So, in the example that I used, if it was a one million dollar, uh, potential benefit and we can reduce the accidents by fifty percent, so we have a benefit of half a million dollars, and the project cost would be just, you know, whatever the cost of the improvements would be for that project. And again, that's the sole criteria that's used for awarding these projects, you know, um, of course, if the projects are eligible for this funding. So, with that, we looked at countywide, we looked at, um, where the accidents are, and we identified two corridors that have higher-than-average, uh, accident history, and that's Avenue four twenty-four and Spacer Drive. We also looked at, um, more than these two projects, but these were the two projects that we thought would have, would be competitive in terms of the benefit-cost ratio. For some reason, the pictures don't show up, but Avenue four twenty-four, um, is one of the projects that we selected. Um, it's in the northern part of the county, it's approximately three-mile, uh, long segment. Um, we're proposing to do some, um, rumble strips or audible traffic, uh, warning striping, which will alert drivers if they start to drive off the road. We also noticed that at the intersection of Road one oh four and Avenue four twenty-four, there was, um, some higher-than-average collision, so we're gonna widen, uh, Road one oh four, install some left-turn, uh, lanes to, um, reduce those accidents, and of course, we'll upgrade the striping and markings throughout the corridor.
Can I ask a question briefly, Ben? Uh, you, you, as I look at the, uh, overall map, it sort of has that continuous line. Are we gonna be looking at reconstructing that road as a part of this process?
Um, we'll just look at, uh, doing some pavement work to widen the road in certain areas, to install either the rumble strips or the left-turn lanes, but not reconstructing the road. As a matter of fact, I think, uh, the goal of this program is to install safety-type of, uh, improvements such as, uh, you know, safety devices like as flashing beacons or improving, installing stop signs or traffic signals, those so, sorts of things, not so much, uh, building a new road, for example.
Reason I bring it up is that, uh, the road does have some very bad areas of it, and a lot of that is related to where, uh, farmers have leveled the land next to it, so water created by the road stands on the road, and we have problems because of seepage underneath the, 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 the road itself. And this is a very heavily-traveled road because it's on the northern part of the city limits of Dinuba. In fact, as you look at one oh four, I think, going, uh, back to the west, um, no, I'm sorry, it'd be eighty, eighty-eight, I think, going back to the west, that's actually in the city limits of Dinuba.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of traffic on that road because it's kind of a, you don't have to go over and get on El Monte, and you can take it all the way over to get into the north part of, of the Rosy. So, heavily-traveled road, and I've been concerned about the condition of that road for some time, you know, as somebody who drives it fairly frequently. I guess I'm thinking of leveraging opportunities. While you're in there doing equipment, doing this work now, does it make sense to look at expanding the scope of this project to do something more, you know, while you've got equipment stuff there? So, I just bring it up as a thought.
No, that's a good point, and, uh, um, we have some dollars in there to do some isolated road improvements. Obviously, we don't wanna re-stripe a road that's in bad condition, so we'll, we'll take a look at that, and then we've done that on some of our other projects.
And as you go up the, as you go up that grade on Smith Mountain, that, that really is a very, very bad portion of the road, too. Uh, but I don't wanna say anything bad about the project, thank you.
No, no, those are good points, and actually, um, you know, the project cost, for example, on this one is a hu, one point five million dollars with a benefit-cost ratio of six. So, we believe that'll be a competitive project. The next project is Spacer Drive, very similar, it's also three miles. This one, for example, doesn't much, doesn't have as much pavement work, um, but it's a three-mile segment, also install, um, installing some flashing beacons at some existing intersections to warn motorists of the upcoming stop sign, um, adding the rumble strips along the edge of the pavement, and of course, upgrading the existing signage and, and markings. This is, this type of project's a little bit more competitive, it's a, you know, same length of road, but it doesn't have as much pavement work like you're mentioning, so the cost is a lot less, two hundred sixty thousand dollars, and the benefit cost is sixteen, so it's a more competitive project. So, this funding source looks for more of these types of projects as, uh, as opposed to road improvements, um, but we did, did, did account for some road improvements on the four twenty-four project, so. With that, our next step is, pending your approval, we'll submit the grant application by the end of this week. Uh, we should know in three to four months, um, if we are successful, and, um, assuming we're successful, we could have these projects designed and constructed in the next two to three years. Having some technical issues here, I don't have a, a summary map, but I do have a table, and it shows, um, our, uh, completed and, uh, ongoing projects, uh, over the last few years. We've been very successful with this program. I'm in cycle five, we were awarded almost two million dollars worth of projects, including, uh, the Reservation Road, uh, project, which we installed some guard rail and a lot of safety improvements. That was one of our more dangerous, um, roads in the county. Um, it won some awards from APWA and also, uh, from TCAG, uh, Local Motion Award. But over the years, we've been awarded, um, see, in the first year, over two million dollars, set, cycle six, three million dollars, and cycle seven, which we applied for last year, over three million dollars. So, it's over eight million dollars in the last three years or so. And, uh, this year, we're submitting for, uh, almost one point eight million dollars. It's a little bit less, but we're finding it's a little bit more difficult, uh, to find these, uh, we've kind of addressed some of our more dangerous roads, um, but it's become a little bit more difficult to find, uh, these competitive projects in terms of the data that's required to support them. So, with that, our request is for approval of the submission of a grant application, um, for Drive one thirty-four in the amount of two hundred sixty thousand dollars, and Avenue four twenty-four in the amount of one point five-five million dollars to the Highway Safety Improvement Program and authorized, uh, the RMA to submit the application. Like to thank the board and CAO for your support on our, for RMA and our public works projects, especially these safety projects, which of course are so important. Caltrans, local assistance, and the Federal Highway Administration, they've been, uh, very supportive of Tulare County, um, on these projects, have actually used us as an example of how to prepare these applications in their statewide webinar, so they've kind of given away some of our secrets, but hopefully we're still competitive. And, uh, TCAG staff who programs these projects and makes us, makes the funding available to us, and then RMA staff, uh, you know, I'm the one up here making the presentation today, but our staff did all the, all the work, performing the analysis, um, acquiring all the data that's required, um, to make these, um, applications competitive. So, with that, if, uh, you have any questions?
Deal, Ben. Uh, anything we can do to, to get a little extra money, you know, with over three thousand miles of road in the county. One of our districts has got, I know, a list of roads that need to be repaired, but anytime we can take care of these type issues, uh, it's just, uh, it's less money we have to spend on other things, so, good job.
Thank you.
No further comments between I move approval.
Moved by Supervisor Wordley.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous for, oh, without Supervisor Sheeda being here, so. Thank you, Ben. Okay, now we'll move on to item number twenty-eight, tree mortality removal project. Mr. Coyne.
Good morning, Board Members. Eric Coyne, Deputy CAO. I bring you today for, uh, approval, uh, the phase one of our Tulare County Task Force Tree Removal Program, um, project. We give you two maps, one is a locator, I, I think you're all familiar with where Bolsh Park and Bear Creek Road are, but also for the public, and this will be up on our tree mortality website, a more specific, uh, project area for where we propose to remove trees. This is, very simply put, um, something that if you approve, we could start as soon as, uh, Monday. We are waiting one final check-off from the US Forest Service, but we anticipate success there. We're targeting on the most dangerous areas for these hazard trees, fifteen feet from the edge of the pavement on either side of these two roads. We're partnering with CalFire. We've been working with, uh, the Forest Service to, uh, identify a method and approved, uh, procedures. What we would do, CalFire would dedicate about a fifteen thousand dollar commitment that they would, um, donate to the effort, if you will. Uh, they would need inmate, inmate crews and state, uh, labor to, uh, cut and chip these trees. Uh, county forces, we're proposing from the road yard, would work, uh, to do flagging and safety, um, uh, traffic measures, also to use a county loader to help, uh, with this process. Uh, we anticipate those costs to the county, those are the only costs that'd be billed to the county, to be about fifty thousand dollars. This is, uh, targeting an area where we've actually done a survey, we're not estimating. We know that there's thirteen hundred trees that are marked, ready to go, that need to be removed in this area. We hope to, within three to four weeks, good weather, no fires, to divert the county forces or the CalFire people, be able to knock this out in three to four weeks. So, uh, one caveat, and, uh, if we were to contract out the county's portion of the proposed work, it would cost at least double and maybe three times as much. What we're proposing is that, um, if we use funds that are eligible for the road fund, we could do this very quickly and more efficiently and cheaper with county forces. They will not be reimbursable because they are county employees, but the main thing is here, this allows us to move forward and remove trees right now and not spend a period of weeks or longer trying to contract and identify people that can do this work at greater cost, I, I might say. And with that, I would ask for approval and take any questions.
Uh, Eric, um, what, what is the, um, log yard status of this project? Where are the logs gonna go?
The logs will be chipped and spread, I'm glad you asked that, I neglected that. They'll be spread as erosion control at the side of the roads, so we expect to grind almost all of these trees. There will be some trees that may be too big, uh, that, that, because of this terrain, as you know, there's a sharp falloff. You cut a tree, it may be rolling down the hill for quite some ways, we're not gonna pull that back up. Um, others, we may not be able to leave at the side of the road because they'd be in the road because there's a cliff face or a bank. And so, there are two small areas that, uh, we're working with the US Forest Service to identify on their property where we'd be allowed to relocate a small amount of trees. Uh, I'm talking probably less than a hundred trees. Uh, but the idea is to grind these trees up, they start with the smaller trees. Small in this case is about eighteen inches in diameter down, and so, there, there's really no log deck, there's nothing being relocated. The trees that will be relocated, the Forest Service wants them available for public use, for firewood or whatever, they can just take them, there's no cost, and, uh, that's how they would be disposed of.
And the reason, one of the reasons I brought this up, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, this was a, at the meeting yesterday, this was a major topic of concern, um, and our situation's somewhat different than most of the other counties. When you get to Mariposa, uh, Stan, Tuolumne County, where you have a lot of private inholdings, uh, it's a major issue where to take these logs, uh, because you can't just leave them on the ground, uh, and you've got people's property, a lot of private property owners, and so, trying to find a home for these, for these logs is a big issue. Now, moving forward, it will become a bigger issue for us, presumably, but one of the problems we have is that the parks are, I mean, the Forest Service, I was, a little mistake, Parks, the Forest Service is, um, not allowing trees to be taken off the National Monument. So, that, that therein lies a problem because there's, they're, they're not being allowed to be used unless people are gonna use them on-site for firewood and so forth. I chuckle a little bit because when you go up there and see the amount of dead trees, it's like, there's enough firewood for the rest of the western United States up there, but, um, anyway, that, that's a major issue elsewhere, uh, whether or not there's enough log decks. The other thing I want to point out is that, um, this, you know, we are positioned to receive up to seventy-five percent of our costs, uh, reimbursed by the State of California, and most counties have either gone, the counties that are affected, there's ten counties in the, in the southern part of this here in Nevada, uh, most of them have either contracted with or in the process of contracting with a full-time dead trees czar, if you will, somebody who's a registered professional forester or an arborist, and they are just sort of overseeing these projects because there's so much engagement involved in these kind of things. And, um, that would be a reimbursable expense, and, and we talk about the fact it may cost more to do private, we don't really know that till we go out and do it. Um, we have our own local task force, and we've got, uh, as I mentioned before, we have utility companies up there working with contract crews, we've got Caltrans that they're working with, Cal, contract crews, there may be opportunities to partner with them where the people and equipment are already in place, adjacent to or close to where we're looking at projects, we may be able to bring those costs way down, but if we contract out, we can get seventy-five percent reimbursed by the State of California for the emergency services. So, uh, I, I very much appreciate this coming for us today. Uh, I hope we can look at going, as we move forward, though, at being access, able to access these state funds to help reimburse the county for a lot of work needs to be done, and I do believe we need to very seriously look at hiring somebody full-time to do this because this is a big project, and everybody's, you've got other jobs, and everybody else has got other jobs in the county, too, and it really needs somebody to kind of ride hurt on it because it's, it's a, it's, it could be a very, very, very big issue. So, um, thanks for bringing it forward, and I'm, I'm grateful, I will certainly support this and glad to see it move forward, but as I look out at the next phase, I'm hoping we will be able to be a little bit, you know, broader in terms of our scope and look at accessing the state funding and, you know, attack more trees because there's a lot of trees that need to be addressed. I mean, we're talking about a very small part of Tulare County, we've got up in the north part of, in my district, uh, a lot of acres up there, a lot of roads that need to be addressed also, and, and we've got church camp up there and different things, so there's a lot, a lot of work to be done, and this is a beginning, and, uh, and that's a ba, major step, but we need to keep the ball rolling on this.
Yeah, go ahead, Supervisor Vanderpool.
You know, I would just take it from a, I know that in, in general, we look at it as a public safety perspective and approach, but I, I think that this is very important, uh, because this is something that we can control, our, our own destiny regarding, um, and this is, you know, we have a lot of tourism, we've got a lot of, uh, local individuals who go up to Bolsh Park on a regular basis, and, you know, should one of these trees fall on, on a county road, um, you know, we have to feel responsible and we have the ability to do something about it, and we don't. I wish that the federal government would take that same approach, I wish they would look at it and say, "We have an obligation and an opportunity to provide for enhanced public safety in our national park, national forest grounds," but they're not doing anything about it. Uh, I'm glad to see that we, as a county, are. Thirteen hundred trees is minor when there's millions of dead trees in our county, um, but it's a start. Uh, we've gotta start somewhere, and, and we can't risk everything that we've worked hard to create here in the county through fiscal responsibility, um, to take care of really someone else's problem. So, um, I, I think it's really great that we're, uh, doing this and moving it forward, I, I'll be very supportive as well. Um, I think we're gonna, uh, find that, uh, there are, uh, lots more opportunities up there. I don't know that we need to go so far as to hiring someone, um, because we're, you know, again, I do think we're limited, but I, I also like knowing the fact that Eric Coyne is working a lot of hours to get this stuff done and put in front of us so that we can move forward. So, thanks, Eric, I appreciate your hard work.
Supervisor Cox.
Um, you know what, kind of skipped over a little bit here is a partnership with other agencies here, them pitching in their resources, their crews, I think that's crucial here, looking for as many opportunities as we can to partner because we do have, you know, dual responsibility here, it's just not a hundred percent our responsibility, they do have some. So, I'm glad to see that you had that partnership in there, there's opportunity to do that. I would tend to, uh, to lean to having someone on staff that would, uh, that could do more of this, you know, listening to the radio and how other people are addressing it. I've heard, you know, super crazy as far as give every county employee a chainsaw and tell them to go up there and start cutting trees down, you know... tell them to go up there and start cutting trees down, you know, which is, which is crazy to, you know, it'll, it'll take care of itself. So I'm glad we're addressing this. Fifteen feet, that's not very far, that's from me to, that's not even, you know, you are further than fifteen feet from me, and we talked about, you know, originally forty, fifty, sixty feet, because when those trees fall, they may be forty feet high, so you've got to go out that far. It's a good beginning, but when, when we start, hopefully, we'll be able to see, you know, the next ones where, where we may need to go. So I'm very supportive of this also, but fifteen feet, you know, so that folks understand, that's not very far.
And I, I was going to point that out, too, before you jump in, Eric, because the, the goal, I mean, we, there is, under apparently the SEQA analysis or NEPA analysis that's being done, I, I know in the case of Caltrans, they're out there going as much as a hundred feet, I believe, on either side, so, because these trees, you said, these trees are going to be oftentimes a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet tall, so the, the danger of them falling on the roads is way beyond that fifteen feet. This, again, is a beginning. The goal, working with the Forest Service, is to get to a, a greater depth, but that does involve, you know, with, right now, when Eric mentioned that there's still one thing we're lacking, is the Forest Service is signing off on this, they're doing an analysis to see if there's any kind of archaeological issues along, or cultural issues along the way that need to be protected, but that, that is, we have to get more than this. I mean, this is a beginning, but there's a lot more that needs to be done, because fifteen feet, like you say, is, this doesn't get close to dealing with.
Steve, maybe you know this, or Eric does, what, what kind of number are we looking at if we do get to, let's say, a hundred feet, like Caltrans is doing? I mean, it, is it going to be a tenfold multiple, or is it going to be higher than that?
If you figure fifteen feet?
Thirty-seven thousand trees along our sixty miles of road. The, the key thing Supervisor Worthley's referred to it. There are two key issues, and he's laser-focused on both of them. One is the ability to remove a tree from the monument. I mean, we don't have permission to move one a hundred feet out of the monument, let alone a mile, let alone two miles, so a log deck is real, irrelevant, unless we can find something on the monument to stack the trees. The second thing is the export restriction, but the key thing that Supervisor Worthley and I have been trying to focus on is permission and a clarity for, under what circumstances could we remove a tree from the monument? That's hampering more than anything, more than money, more than anything, that is the major roadblock. The second thing I would say is, I, I've only talked to Supervisor Worthley about this, but, because he's kind of our guidance for these projects. Phase two, we are looking at doing the hundred feet. We are talking to the Forest Service, George Powell that you met during the recent presentation of the Valley Supervisors Conference. We're looking at starting to review now internally with the Forest Service to go out the hundred feet, to put a log deck about five to six acres on the Forest Service property, and what we would do there, that will involve contracting out. We will hire truckers, we will hire equipment operators. We can't not fix your roads, you know, Johnny's crew can't be in two places. So that would be reimbursable costs, that'd be a much larger scale, but that, that is what we're working on now, and that's frankly what the task force really needs the board's help with, is ability to move a tree off the monument.
Think of what Supervisor Worthley brought to my attention the other day, these trees that are killed by beetles, they're not, they're not stable very long. They, they get real weak and they'll fall, so it's not like a tree dead, dying that just dies, but the beetles, I guess the infestation of the beetles weakens the tree itself and the structure of the tree, and that makes it even worse.
Supervisor may have better info than I, but I've heard after roughly four years of being dead, they become so unstable that they don't want to try to cut them because the, the crews are at real risk.
I, I, I will go even further than that, and, and Charlie can back me up on this, that when you have a lot of dead trees that are old dead trees like that, they won't even send firefighters into those forests because it's just too dangerous for them to be in there, so, and when you think about that, if you're going to aggressively fight a fire, but you won't be able to send people in because of the, of the, the condition of the forest itself, I mean, those are, those are things that have to be kept in consideration. This, this problem is just immense, and it's very frustrating to see the Forest Service caught up in their own regulatory tape and, and doing so little. Now, I will tell you, yesterday, the, the Assistant Deputy Regional Forester was at the meeting, they have come up with additional ten million dollars within their budget to be able to do removal of trees with private property owners and, and nonprofit organizations, and the county can be one of those, and so I don't know whether we're in a position to request that funding. I know there's a very narrow window of opportunity at, towards the end of this month, when applications can be filed for that money, and it is primarily for the ten counties that are most impacted. My guess is we'll see most of it go to the Tulare, Amador, Mariposa counties, because they have so much more private land than we have, but we could stand to, to receive some of those funds, too, so we should.
That's especially important in Supervisor Ennis's district, where we have homes in the woods. We have at least five, maybe six communities that are totally surrounded by dead trees, and that's where the real, there's property risk for these other areas, but this is where to live, and frankly, somebody could die. As Supervisor Vanderpool put out, during the peak summer months, like right now, there's probably twenty-five hundred campers out there, some were in mountain home, some in balls, they're completely full, and if those roads become blocked, everybody's at risk.
Thank you, Eric, for that presentation, and we do know the seriousness of the problem. Anybody's been to the mountains can see that we're due for what I call a reckoning, and if that fire does start up there, we're not talking a hundred thousand acres, we may be talking a million acres, so.
So Mr. Chair, we, we are asking for your vote for approval to move forward.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Worthley.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous with Supervisor Ashida.
And I want to say my thanks to the staff, I know there's a lot of hard work involved working on this, and again, kind of extraordinary effort, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, that concludes our open session of the board meeting. Do we have need for closed-session council?
Yes, we do. Items A and B will be, are off calendar, I mean, I'm sorry, A and C, we will be going into closed sessions on items B, C, and we do expect an announcement out.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for everybody attending this morning.
This is, this is an announcement out on item number G. The Board of Supervisors authorized the defense of individually-named defendants, including those to be named later, with a reservation of rights in. The, the case of RR, a minor by and through his guardian at liam, Debbie Reese, et al. versus Tulare County et al., United States District Court, Eastern District, one colon sixteen hyphen C V hyphen zero zero five seven zero hyphen A W I hyphen S K O. The adversary, adverse, adversary party is Debbie Reese individually and guardian, and as guardian at liam of RR, represented by Nicholas Reed and Logan Quark, attorneys at law. This case involves wrongful death, officer-involved shooting. Supervisor Worthley made the motion, second by Supervisor Vanderpool, unanimous vote in favor.